We started out.
It was it was difficult.
We finished yesterday. Neither one of us.
Yeah, please don't tell me she's part of Jeremy's library.
Well, she's actually bringing a couple of children.
Yes.
Because she went to.
Embarrassed.
That's.
She really hate. Okay, and you listen to say.
And she just.
Mechers. Yeah.
So, okay. What do you mean? He said that lady doesn't have any. Yes, so cheers. Oh, good. Nice to see you because I don't. I don't bring my. Have I never saw one. Girl. They have galleries of. I'm taking. No, they're not. They're always I have. I have everything else. You like. That gets planned. I think I have. I give the name. Don't worry about them. Because they come from here. And I. I have that. We squeeze out and that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for doing that.
It is. I I almost. You passed. I had another half dozen and I almost brought it. They didn't use you.
But you might have. Want to have some.
Well, that's the biggest part of it, yes. Bring back. Drop. I can play this evening. I can access for one to five weeks. Because you. I don't want to move not every time. Their date is so much. I. Yeah. Yeah, hopefully. And I couldn't make the point late two eggs yesterday with today. We were like. Exactly. I know. It's obviously actually also. It's a negative. But it is. Oh, yes. Yes. And. I mean, upset. In the upset and the chicken. Everything goes. We know. And sad. I had it.
Good things.
Lost. I know. That's what I've expected. It's hard to read.
Oh, well. Oh, well. To the God.
Yeah. Okay, we got. It is.
So we. With a great time.
Bye. I'll be doing that in some place. Finally. Yeah. Yeah. That word. Come, buddy.
Let's wait till they get.
All right.
That's. But probably. We don't.
So. Like, please.
I think.
But. I love time.
Stay more. That word. Oh, we are. Yeah. That is. That is.
That's a strange. You don't know how much.
Yeah. Yeah. You sort of say. Actually, I'm wrong here. I should.
Yes.
Also, you know. It's a lot of. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's. So. Seven o'clock and.
I have.
Just. Four. When I. January. They were. It's. 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 It's.
But. No, I can't. So.
So. Always. It will fit into like. It'll like. I'm twenty three carry on. It's actually fit. But there's.
Oh.
You used to take that. This is. As we've ever since going. Travel. It's it's the nicest sort of thing. It lays.
That makes me feel good.
Always look on the bright side.
Yes. The area. Ah. That. My. I'm just.
Given. And so. So. You see. Right. Danny.
Like.
If. I'm. Something.
The three of us could do. Pat, I love this. Check. There's plenty of. There is. Yeah. It's so. My. Those stories. Are. Backing.
For. Parts and rats. You like. Then or. Very. I'm. The. It's. I'm. Where it's.
Anyways, we appreciate. Yes. Sir. Our. I just. That's. Jones. Is all. Nice. To bring. Someone. A little. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think.
Yeah. For another job. Right. I'm. For days. And. We lost. Summer. I lost. You just. About.
Now, three minutes.
I think that's pretty good, so.
Two minutes. Yeah, two minutes.
That's. And then looking.
I was worried about the. Well, and maybe very sucker. Door. Actually. My. Very. Let's calm it down. See. Sort of. Yeah. Color. Yes. It's not. How. Basically, you do it itself.
Yeah. I'm. So. There's. That. It's. Important. Studies.
I'm sometimes a little picky about having. Just. Throwing. People. About that. When you want to. The friends. Right. About what you. Tell.
Oh, yeah. Hello, Michael.
Awesome. Very.
Fine. I'm great. And I'm here. Yeah.
So. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Down. The. We. Were. Not. Again. I see. The. Getting this. Max. Is. You. So. That's. Like.
See. Always sign. See the. Red line. To the.
It's. Minutes. Let's see. The. We. So. To. Passes. I know. That. I'm.
I. Get me that one. Obviously.
All right. I'd say. By the time I finish clearing my throat, it'll be seven o'clock. And so we will. Open the planning board meeting. First, we do have a quorum of regular members here. So that's good. And. Any comments of interest? I would like to do one adjustment to the agenda. And that's that I would like to. Flip. Public comment section with reviewing the minutes so that we will have the public comment. Linked right to the time that we will. Deal with the application. But I'm sorry for people.
Yes. I mean.
And. So let's look at the planning board minutes from September twenty third. Uh, that's when we had a workshop. Right? Did anybody have any changes, any adjustments to the agenda? I mean, to the minutes? Motion to approve is printed.
Make that motion.
All second.
All in favor? I. Okay. Good. I knew that would take long. Uh, so this is a time when normally we. Allow a chance for public comment for anything that's on anybody's mind. Uh, my guess is that. Uh, people are mainly here to uh either listen or to talk about. The making comments on the peer application that we have before us. Uh, that's not. An official public hearing. We've already had an official public hearing, but. We need to hear from people. If they have things that we need to know as we make finish our. Discussion. Just so you know where we stand on things. At our. July twenty second meeting, we heard, we accepted the application and we went through the first four of the standards. Uh, regarding appear. And then we got to uh some questions and we stopped. We tabled it because we needed to speak with our lawyer to get some definition. And then it's been quite a bit of time as the applicants worked through some of the. Questions and concerns that. People raised and that. The lawyer's response may have brought up. So what I thought I'd do before we opened it up is that I would ask the applicants to just talk about where things stand right now and just tell us where we are. So people can hear that.
All right, thank you, man. Um, my name is Will Gartley with Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying. I'm the engineer for the project. And we're here tonight representing Richard Lynda Breeden, the trustees of Sea Smoke Residence Trust at seventy six Sea Smoke Road in St. George. And with me tonight is.
I'm Brian Rayback. I'm a lawyer with Pierce Atwood in Portland.
Uh, and I'm Blake Sanborn. I'm a principal with Richardson and Associates, which is a landscape architecture firm right here in Maine, based in soccer.
All right, so after the July twenty second meeting, we listened to all the comment from board and the public. And went back and. Really focused on the requirements in the ordinance number five and six, because that's where we stopped. And those are the two remaining ones that are really pertinent to this application. And. Um, so we submitted an additional cover letter. Um, that I put together addressing those items. Um, in more detail than we did originally. Um, we included a couple of photos, which I'll go over in just a second, of some similar peers in the area. Um, we included some aerial photographs that also show similar peers in the general vicinity of the Breeden property. Um, Blake's firm put together a photo simulation using photos taken from Drifton Beach. Um, showing what the proposed structure would look like at two different locations and at both high and low tide at both locations. Um, we'll go over those in a second also. And we included the peer plan again. The only change to that is I added some dimensions. Um, and I cut off the columns so that they don't show on the plan below ledge. Um, because you won't see those. So just to be a little more accurate. And then we also included a letter from Brian. And so just a quick summary, um, you know, the application is to replace. A pier gangway inflow that was on the property in a slightly different location. Uh, the fixed portion of the proposed pier is a hundred and eighty feet from shore with only forty feet of that extending beyond mean low water. The proposed pier is intended to replace the pier that was constructed in two thousand nine and destroyed in the January twenty twenty four storms. The proposed location is approximately five hundred linear feet. Along the shore. Um, to the north. From the original location. So it's kind of around the point towards Drifton. This puts the proposed pier in the lee of that point. And the original. That the original pier was on and it's in a more perfected location from the southerly winds. We've obtained DEP permit, Army Corps of Engineers permit and submerged lands. From the state. Um. As you mentioned, at the July twenty second meeting, the board approved the first four requirements of section thirteen twenty two pier stocks and warps of the land use ordinance. So we focused our submission on five and six. Um, seven, eight and nine are irrelevant and ten is easily met by doing construction by barge. So requirement number five reads that the facility shall be consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area. So we're confident that the proposed pier meets this requirement. Uh, however, the board indicated at the previous meeting that they intended to get clarification on this requirement from town council. So we also, after that meeting, reached out to Brian for legal opinion. So that we could ensure that we've met the requirement. Um, and so Brian has provided us with that opinion and we're hoping he could share a little bit of that now.
Sure, thank you. So as I said, my name is Brian Rayback. I'm a land use lawyer at Pierce Atwood. I've been practicing land use law for about twenty six years now, all over the state. Um, my intent tonight is to offer our perspective on the provision that you're you're wrestling with thirteen twenty two sub five. Which requires that a peer be consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area. Um. I'm aware that your counsel, Bill Kelly, has provided you with a letter on this. Uh, I think his review is helpful. Um, but he's very careful to say that he hasn't reviewed our application and he isn't offering an opinion on whether it should or should not be approved. Um, he also seems to suggest that you should read thirteen twenty two five together with another provision thirteen twenty two six. Which is the provision about the size of the pier. That's based on a a nineties decision out of the main Supreme Judicial Court called Lentine. Um. That the idea there is that the consistency question then becomes a function only of the size of the pier. Uh, candidly, that works for us. Um, we think the size is appropriate. And so if the board goes in that direction, that's fine. Um, respectfully, we aren't. I'm not certain I understand how counsel got to that position. They are. They, those provisions used to be together in your ordinance. They have now clearly intentionally been separated. And so. My most conservative view of this, my most cautious view of this would be to advise you to read them separately, apply them separately. Um, so. Um, context matters. As Will said, this is a replacement project. Uh, the applicants could rebuild by right in the same location. Um, but the project here is in a slightly different location on the property to better protect it. Um, we think this is really responsible development and it's consistent with what Governor Mills was talking about after the storms in January of twenty four. The build back better. She was urging managers to go ahead and think about future conditions like sea level rise and severe storms and how do we build our structures? Um, in in those conditions. So. Let's talk about um the standard itself. Again, the the question is, is the facility consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area? As you recognized at your last meeting, it's not at all clear what that means. Um, what's the area here? Uh, for example, how does one define the character? Um. Do we look only to the project site? Do you look to a butters? Do you pick a different distance every time you look at a pier? Is it a mile? Is it? Half a mile? What's the, what's the right area? And what does character mean? Is it what actually exists? Is it more aspirational? Is it sort of what you want your community to look like? Um. Candidly, we think a court, if it, if it were pushed, we think a court would find the standard is unconstitutional. Um, if challenged on appeal, we note that Mr. Kelly didn't address that question. I assume he wasn't asked that question quite as directly. Um. Either because it's void for vagueness or it's an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. Um, those were the provisions that Mr. Kelly talks about. A law is void for vagueness. If the language is so unclear that people have to guess at its meaning or if it encourages arbitrary or discriminatory decision making. A law is an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. If it fails to contain sufficient standards to guide administrative action. Thus essentially forcing a planning board like yourselves to legislate, which you don't have the power to do, that's reserved at town meetings. To fill in the gaps. But you need to give some life to the standard. So main courts have consistently struck down language like you have here under these doctrines as a violation of due process. There's several examples. We cite them in our letter. There's a case out of Georgetown called Casulka where the court struck down a standard to conserve natural beauty. Uh, there's a cape, uh, case from Brunswick called Cove. Where the standard was to preserve the essential character of the area. That was struck down. Uh, there's a case called Sawyer versus Town of Hamden where the requirement is to integrate with the environment. The case, the court struck that down as well. Um. In short, these are decisions that sort of rely on it. It's kind of like a beauty is in the eye of the beholder standard and the court has said that just doesn't fly under due process. Now, the main municipal association. Because of these decisions. Uh, and that's a board, that's the organization that trains boards like you guys. Um. They advise in their planning board manual. It is not legally permissible to include a review standard that a project must be compatible with the, with the neighborhood. Or harmonious with the surrounding environment. That's on page forty eight of that manual. So. The reason for these decisions is is basically fairness. That's what it boils down to. If standards aren't clear. Uh, applicants don't know what they need to do in order to get a permit. And planning boards don't know what they need to do. They have to sort of make up the rules as they go. That's not how you think of it normally. But if those aren't in the rules, you've got to give life to these standards to give them some meanings. That puts a lot of pressure, frankly, on a planning board. Because you're open to the appearance that you're just deciding based on what you like or what you don't like. Uh, not on what the ordinance says or picking projects based on who the applicants are. Now, we have a fundamental problem. Uh, I'm telling you, I think the standard, if challenged, would fall. Um, but the problem is a planning board doesn't have the authority to say that it's not going to apply its own ordinance, right? Only a court can strike down your ordinance. So what do we do here? Um. Fortunately, in this case, we think the solution is pretty simple. The standard is written. Sure, it's, it it's vague, but you don't have to decide this case for all peers, for all time, forever, anywhere in town, right? As Mr. Kelly says, all you need to do is to determine if this project. Is compliant based on the evidence you hear about it. Um. And we ask that you keep in mind that a previous planning board looked at a pier in this location. Um, and may have been under the prior standard, but they thought that this was consistent uh with the character and uses in the community. There shouldn't be a different result just because there are different members of a planning board. So. If we could talk through some of the language. Um, the word consistent, I think, has its typical meaning. I agree with Bill Kelly. Uh, it means not conflicting or interfering with. I think he's right about that. The word character is less clear and he doesn't give you any guidance on that point. Um. In in this context, I think character is really about the fundamental nature of of a place. It's about a sense of place. Uh, whatever that means. Um, it suggests that perhaps we all get to define that for ourselves, right? Some might prefer a working waterfront. Others might prefer a natural shoreline. And so we tend to think of the community character based on the things that we like, that we want to promote. But whatever our personal preferences are. I think peers are an essential part of the local coastline here in Maine. I I think that can't be denied. Um. Saying otherwise is a little like saying a hot dog isn't consistent with a ballgame at Fenway Park, right? Just because you're a vegetarian. Um, this is a town that has four hundred years more of maritime history. The first people to live here were fishermen in part. The first European settlers included fishermen. Uh, you continue to have recreational and commercial boaters. Um, you have a commercial ferry, all of which need access to the water via a pier. Um, additionally, as Will is going to show you, there are dozens of peers in the town. For commercial and recreational purposes, uh, many longer than this one. And we think this one is really designed well to be visually unobtrusive and we ask that you take a look at that. Um. The other term that's very confusing here is the term area in this context. We think it has to refer to more than just an arbitrary stretch of coastline to be determined afresh and anew every time with every new application. This is the town's ordinance. It applies everywhere in town. So we think area refers to the town. Um. If the town had wanted to allow the planning board to bar peers. From certain portions of the community, we think it would have said so. For example, the ordinance could create zoning districts. Right? So that peers are allowed in some zones, but not others. The town has chosen not to do that. Um. In Camden, they have different standards based on whether you're in the inner harbor or the outer harbor, right? The town could have done that here, chose not to. Um. Otherwise. An applicant could never be the first one on a given stretch of coastline to get a project done, right? And the standard shouldn't depend on whether someone else is already there. Okay? So in short. We think you're right to be thoughtful about this and ask questions. Um, and if you keep an open mind, we think you'll agree with us that we've met it here. If you disagree, I would ask you to please think about this. The solution isn't to deny the permit because we don't just get to pick projects that we like and don't like. The answer isn't to take an arbitrary arbitrary standard and make it worse by developing the criteria on the fly here tonight. Um, rather. If you do feel strongly that this is the wrong policy for St. George, we ask that you do your duty by applying the ordinance tonight. And then go to town meeting and work to change the ordinance. Pass new legislation that changes the rules, if that's what you'd like to do. Um. If you do agree that the pier is thoughtfully designed and it fits and you vote to approve it, well, then there's no harm done. And and there's no problem. Um. I'm going to turn it back to Will and let him tell you more about how the project was designed and and Blake as well. I'm happy to discuss any of this. I know there's a lot to it. Um, and I'd like to talk more with you about it if you have questions, once they have a chance to finish that presentation. Thanks.
Remember, people are going to want to talk at some point.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll go quickly here. It's okay to stand up here. Can you be able to hear? Okay. I just. So in support of that, that criteria number five. Um. We submitted a bunch of photographs. And so this first one is a uh similar structure that's in mosquito harbor. Which is uh just a little under a mile from the Sea Smoke property. And one thing I wanted to point out is that we spent a lot of time with the design, doing this a little differently than most of the ones we've brought here before. In that we've used much fewer columns and piles. Um, in order to try to minimize the visual impact. This is another one that's also in mosquito harbor. And I've got a photograph that'll show you the location of those. Um, but the point is just that character wise, this pier is very similar to other peers that are in the general vicinity and and in the area. This is just a quick aerial photo to give you a sense of where the pier is relative to Drifton Beach. At the last public hearing, there were a bunch of comments about the visual impact. And so from the fixed end of the pier to kind of a random spot over here on the beach where the beach is accessed is a little over fifteen hundred feet. Then. This photo is showing Port Clyde Harbor with um some of the peers that are, which is. But some of the peers that are on um. On uh Hopper Island, sorry. And so you can see there's. You know, two hundred and sixty two feet, two hundred and thirty nine feet, two hundred and twenty four. And the point is that this isn't very far from the property and there's quite a few peers along. Um, the edge of Pupper Island. This. Oh, this one is mosquito harbor.[1544.28] oh, this one is Mosquito Harbor. Whoops, sorry.
Sure, I'm. Maybe he can move.
I'm just going to work tomorrow.
This is Mosquito Harbor. So these are the two that uh, I just showed pictures of at the beginning. Um, this one isn't here anymore. This is a um, an older photograph.
We have copies. We have copies. Don't worry about us.
So anyway, these are the two that I showed at the beginning that were Mosquito Harbor. And uh, this one actually, I think, got wiped out with storms, it's not there. These are piers in Tennant Harbor. Um, you know, you can see again, over two hundred feet in many cases. And uh, this is the long parts net. Um, quite a few years over on that side. This one's two hundred and sixty-one feet. And then the final one is over um, in Turkey Cove. And the reason I wanted to show that is because there's some significantly long years over there, two hundred and forty-four, two forty, two hundred and ninety-six feet. Uh, so again, these were mainly just to show that we're proposing is not out of character with with what is in St. George. And then, you know, we felt pretty confident, um, again, that we were, you know, feeling that standard. And um, but we wanted to ask these guys to do a photo simulation to give us a sense of what it would look like from Driftin Beach. So I'm going to let Blake go through those quickly.
Alright, thanks, Will. Um, so for those who are less familiar, photo simulation, basically a before and after. So pretend you're watching HGTV. We'll go through them one by one. Um, to be fair, we did do simulations of low tide and high tide from two locations at Driftin Beach. So at low tide, from the first location, which is shown here, so this is the photo was taken there in August. Um, this is what it looks like today. That looks pretty familiar to most of you, I would think. The proposed pier is shown in this view. So same photo, in this case, you can make up the pier here, and it's what you might find is that it's actually difficult to make out. Uh, this is a high resolution photo, and the way that we were able to develop this drawing is not using artistic license. It's actually a process where we took geospatial data. So we took um, the topographic data, which is essentially what we call as Lansing Architects contour data, but the hills. And we modeled not just the property in question, but we modeled the entire harbor so that we had context. And so we could line up the proposed pier that's modeled exactly to the scale of the engineering drawings. But we sat there and we said, there's, you know, uh, posts every five feet on the handrail, and we modeled that. You know, twenty years ago, somebody would have made that out of chipboard. We just make it in a computer, and uh, it's the same thing. So this is representing exactly what's shown in that drawing three dimensionally. And then, because we wanted to make sure we got it right, we got another topographic data source, which was from SketchUp, and we overlaid the two, because we were like, what if we're twenty feet off to the left, they aligned? And um, after we had done the simulation, we also their normal QA QC or quality in full process where we compare and review the process and found that everything was true to alignment. So can answer any questions on methodology that may come up. But I just wanted to let you know that it's not a sketch, it's as proposed. So this would be another view. So this is um, existing conditions at high tide. So, you know, as I was saying before, we modeled both high tide condition, which you're seeing here as existing. Here's high tide proposed. So obviously, in high tide, you see less of the proposed pier. And then, so I wanted to support, we did that same thing for the next view. So here you're looking at view two, existing conditions at low tide. So our point where the photo was taken has shifted a little further down on Driftin Beach, just to show that perspective as well, because the pier looks a little different. You're further to the left or further to the right. So we're just trying to get you a lay of land. Um, and so here, uh, you can see the proposed. What you might notice is it's not really projecting opacity or initial love from that view. So um, just something to keep in mind. And um, this would be the last one. So this is during high tide. So um, you know, high tide existing, and then high tide with the proposed, um, and that's essentially what we're seeing. So happy to answer questions as appropriate time.
I I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, about L six. You see those people down there at the edge of the water in L six? The low tide picture?
It's low tide, yeah.
Yeah. You see those two people down at the water's edge there?
Yes.
Do you have any pictures that were taken um, with the simulation showing what it would look like to the people who are down there um, at the edge of the water?
Um, I mean, we don't have this specific point.
I mean, any, any point down, any point that would be like a person at the water's edge with a little kid or something?
We haven't, we didn't select that as a viewpoint, but I mean, what I might offer is just that, you know, this view in general, like if we look at Will's plan from where the pier sits relative to where that beach is, there's still a significant dis- distance of water between, say, where they're standing and where the pier is proposed. And so it's, you know, we had to select some representative points of view. I think what you're seeing is um, you know, where uh, people may congregate. Sure, could you get a little closer? Yes, but there's still, you know, as the plan shows, a substantial distance between, you know, really any point. And of course, during high tide, we're not nearly so close.
So answers no.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go out in the water or.
Went out in the water. I'm asking if you don't like to wear people who go on the beach, so.
Anything before we open it up? Anything before we open it up?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over a couple more items. So right from the beginning, um, Richard and Linda had asked us to follow the, use the following criteria. So they wanted a more durable and resilient pier, um, a better protected location, the shortest length possible, and to minimize the visual impact. And I think we've, we've gone over a lot of that. One big thing that we changed from that original design was getting away from the granite because it was a big mass, and we would need multiple granite cribs at this location. So um, I think that would change the visibility. It also, um, you know, it's a bigger target for the waves. So by having these piles, it's um, easier to, you could boat under it. Um, and then, and again, the visibility goes away. I think I was hoping to also talk quickly about the criteria number six, um, that the facilities shall be no larger in dimension than necessary. Every time we do orders in spear projects, the first thing we do is a hydrographic study of the uh, area below mean low water and the topographic study of the area of the intertidal and and upland. And the purpose of that is to, is to determine the shortest location for that pier to achieve the the purpose. And um, you can see, we actually topoed it. You can see it right on our um, our site plan and I, in the survey plan that I submitted with the original application, which is labeled V three. Again, the whole purpose of that is, that's our starting point, is trying to find where we get to water depth in the shortest distance, um, which is what we did in the location we selected accomplishes that. Um, the shallowest water depth at the float is about six feet at mean low water. Um, but at least monthly, there's a minus one point nine tide, which is pretty standard. And um, you know, depending on the float design, it'll be twelve to eighteen inches with that float below waters, which leaves us to about two and a half to three feet from the underside of the float to the bottom. And that's about as shallow as we wanted to go, because if a storm coincides with one of those low tides, then there's a high likelihood that a two to half to three foot wave could make the float hit the bottom. And so that's kind of how we set that standard. It wasn't to pick a depth to more a large boat for any length of time. The boats that'll be here will be skiffs, tenders, kayaks. Larger boats will be moored, brought to the float, load and unload. So we do feel pretty confident that, you know, we had that standard in mind right from the start of the project. And then I mentioned at the beginning, so standard seven uh, and through nine are aren't applicable to this project. And then the requirement for number ten is that access be by barge, and that is absolutely the intent. Most of this will be prefaced offsite, the piles installed and everything put together by barge.
Thank you. Okay, so we can open up, and I have um, two letters that I've received uh, a while ago to 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 read. And so we'll open it up.
Excuse me, do I?
Yes.
Before we open up, can I just raise a question?
Yes.
Um, one of the driving factors, what I've heard repeatedly was protection of the pier, but the new location is supposed to provide better protection than where the old pier was. What type of assessment was made of the additional protection that this new location would provide to the pier, you know, to where the old kid was?
It was multiple site visits and.
Yeah, but I'm talking about an assessment of of the protection. In other words, you know, is there a diminished amount of wind or wave action?
Yeah, so, yes. Yeah, so we went there uh, multiple times when it was windy, and there were pretty high waves to visually see where we needed to get to to have calmer water. Um, and that's how we picked it. Plus, looking at the aerial photographs, we could look at the wind directions and see, okay, if it's southerly, we've got good protection. The more easily it gets, the less the protection got. Um, those stone storms in January of twenty twenty-four were mostly southerly. So that was the goal.
All right, so um, if you'll raise your hand, I'll call you and please uh, state your name so that our recording secretary can get that. And just as a little aside, also, if you haven't let her know your name, please let her know at some point. Yes, Jerry?
Alright, I'm Jerry Christman. Uh, thank you, handful, to speak. I've been living in Fort Clyde, my family has for four or five generations, and as a little boy laying down along the shore, as Will pointed out, there was not one dog, I love the valley. Now you have Eric, you have uh, Ed and Howard, you have seven, eight, nine dogs. Basing up through the harbor, one of the most beautiful views in the world. I sit on a dock that the town just built, looking out through there. As I look up through there, you see the sunsets, drifting souls arrest. I never focus on the dock. It does not change my point of view at all, how beautiful Fort Clyde is and how wonderful it is that I am lucky to live here. I feel the same way when I go dig claims in Skew Harbor. And my back and digging claims, and I put my back up and I look out through, and there's five or six dogs, I don't even notice. Again, I go and focus on how beautiful it is. I drank plenty of beers at Driftin Beach, played as a little boy building sandhouses, learned how to swim there. If you put a dock there, it's still not going to change how I feel about that. And it shouldn't for anybody else. One thing I really feel bad about is that all these people built these docks, and they didn't go through the scrutiny that I think in the money he had to pay to get his built. Sorry, that's how we feel.
Anybody else have anything they would like to say? Yes, Rodney?
Yeah, I'm going to read off paper, just so I don't go off on anything. Uh, my name is Rodney Pratt. I live on Driftin Road near the beach, and I'm a full-time resident and registered voter in St. George. My family also has a long history in here um, in St. George as well. At the last meeting, it was stated everyone was against the pier. Not true. My wife and I support Mr. Breeden's fear. But maybe more importantly, I'm very upset that so many people, most of whom do not live here full-time, are now in a sense bullying a property owner. So I'm speaking tonight to defend and support the rights of Mr. Breeden. Mr. Breeden, uh, not that you need me to defend you, but uh, I'm sure you're well equipped to do so on your own, but I feel strongly that you and all property owners have a right to do what you please on your property, so long as you and all of us stay within the boundaries of the law. Uh, while it's true, we all have our opinions and we have the freedom to express these opinions, I don't believe it is in our best interest to bully each other because we don't like something our neighbor is doing. Think about it. How would you like it if your neighbors came out publicly and told you that what you were doing was wrecking the neighborhood? And I did experience that from somewhere. So briefly, I'd like to offer my opinion and some of the concerns from the last meeting. We are a coastal community, so we should accept, expect to see boats on the water and hear them too, as they do their daily jobs. Two additional, uh, two additional boats moored in a pier within the beach view is indeed consistent with the surrounding area. Remember, the old pier was visible from the beach too. The new pier was described as an eyesore. It has been, oh, it hasn't even been built yet, and no one knows what it will look like. Think about that. I'm sure this new pier will be designed and built not only to be functional, but aesthetical pleasing. The town just built a new public landing in Fort Clyde. Part of the attraction is to look out over the harbor and see the boats and the piers and the docks. Why is the beach different? I think the greater eyesore at the beach is all the cars parked along the road. That takes away the natural and pristine beauty of the beach more than any pier or boat does. As far as lobstering, they may possibly be impacted by a new location, possibly, but they gain the location of the old pier, which may indeed be a larger area, and that seems more like a tit for tat type of situation. And lastly, with regard to the concern of trash, I do not believe there would be any more trash from Mr. Breeden or his guests. The bigger trash problem at the beach is from current beachgoers, dog walkers, both residents and tourists. If people are so concerned about trash, why don't I see them at the beach doing something about it? My wife and I clean the beach most mornings, and the trash is not on boats. So finally, I want to reiterate, I support Mr. Breeden and his pier. I disagree with much of what was said at the last meeting, and I want to point out there were more full-time residents not present nor voicing their disapproval. That really speaks volumes. It implies they don't disapprove of the application, otherwise they would have been here and spoken. And I ask all of those who are opposed to this, think about how you would feel if someone was bullying you and telling you that you can't do what you want on your own property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more that we need to hear that we haven't heard? Yes.
Yep, um. My name is Andy Barstow. Uh, we run year-round ferry service in Fort Clyde, and um, we hire local managers, and we make it through the winter by service and boats and docks and boats, and um, so we certainly support the rebuilding of this dock. We have taken care of this dock since it was built in uh, two thousand and nine.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to speak? Yes.
Yes, so I'm not a local like these guys.
Your name?
I'm Grinnell Moore, and my wife's Linda. Uh, we bought a property here in two thousand and eleven. Um, we're summer residents. We go away in the winter. Um, when we were looking for our property, and I guess that makes me more like Richard than like Jerry.
Thank God.
But, you know, having a dock was really essential for us as we were looking. And um, it it was one of the core features that we were actually seeking, and is part of what brought us to this area. When we look out from our property, we see ten docks, not including ours. We see ten other docks. But as Jerry said, I don't look out, I I said, oh, there's that dock or there's that dock. I look out and I see this this beautiful area, and the docks are a part of it. In fact, there was just a new dock built to our west, um, just last year or the year before. I I feel it's an addition. Um, when I look to the west, I see it prominently. Yeah, we're in Deep Cove, we're just around the corner from Fort Clyde. I don't view docks as a visual detriment to the community at all. I just disagree with that. Um, they're a feature of Maine, they're a feature of St. George, uh, we only do Fort Ford. I think they add value to the community. I think they add to our column in in this area. Part of who we are. I also, I've seen Sea Smoke, I, it's a special property, had a dock. I think it's the unfair of the town to not allow that property to have a functional dock. And I'm sure that Richard counted on having a dock, Richard and Linda counted on having a dock when they purchased that property. And having in the, it makes sense. I was by there the other day. I was bringing my boat around the things harbor. And I I nipped in toward Driftin Beach. I took a look from the seaside. I I saw it from the boat's perspective. I didn't see any lobster pots in the area where it's proposed. I also walked on Driftin Beach, and it sits tucked away. I think, I think these guys did a great job of showing how visually minimal it will be. So I'm, I'm here to support Richard and Linda, and I urge the planning board to approve this project.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything that would add something different from what has been said? Yes, Karen?
I'm Karen Bushman. I just wanted to add, stating the obvious a little bit here, but just recognize what we've seen happening along our coastline in the last year or two. Look, we've got a dock right next to Larry and Diane Bailey. It's a beautiful, belapitated dock that's falling into the water. I take pictures of it all the time at sunset because it's beautiful. It's, it's going to deteriorate and go, oh, why don't we get replaced? And what these docks are getting replaced with are structures that are going to stand for the test of time. So we have to expect that they're going to be a little bit more substantial, maybe a little bit stronger, more granite, more whatever that might be. But I don't, I don't see anyone moving to this coastline that wants to change the way that it looks or make it like New York City. So I think we all just need to recognize that folks that buy properties here have the right to access the water, to why they're here, whether it's the beach or dock, or that they, that they have a boat. But they also have the right to build something that is going to stand the test of time. So I think we're seeing that happen right before us, and we have to move through some of that and appreciate that when folks come here and can afford to build something at that level, we should allow them to do that. It's their right to have access to the property and also to build something that is valuable to them in the long term.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Jack?
Jack Denon. Um, I have a question for the landscape architect. The pictures that you're showing us is just the pier itself. It doesn't include the ramp or the float. Is that correct?
Uh, it does. It includes all of those. I'm glad you highlighted that. So um, in this image, there's the gangways and then the float in addition to here. They're a little harder to make out. You can do a portion of the float, as you would imagine, is submerged. So we've got a portion that's above water, and we modeled that based on the datum. So if you look actually at. So if you look actually at low tide and high tide, you'll see the angle of the gangway changes the float. Uh, you know, it's a little further out, a little further, and so they are in here. And there's, you know, obviously, um, that's a seasonal thing. So in middle of winter, you don't have that. But um, we just wanted to show everything on a beautiful and simple.
Okay, yes, sir. Putting up to what Will was saying about the design of the pier and and what my wife and I tried to accomplish in getting these wonderful designers to do it. I, just in case you were wondering, on the back wall here, this, this gray wallpaper is the actual granite pier crib in the old dock. Except it was higher. So it's fourteen feet by eight feet. And you can imagine from, even with my eyes, from a distance, you'd see that giant piece of granite pretty well. The little tube there, that's what it's being replaced with. So we've gone from something that's fourteen feet long and ten feet high to something that's ten feet high and one foot wide. Also, those Will didn't mention, but the the supports will be forty-four feet apart. That means that twenty-two kayaks of an average size can go side by side underneath this dock between the piers. And with most docks, when you have granite piers, the currents and the waves accelerate through those gaps, and it's very hard if you're a kayak or I'm a rower. You try and take a rowboat through in between cribs, you can't do it. But you're gonna have one tube like that and forty-four feet away, there'll be another one. So that's why in this picture, you can't see that dock because it looks like it's floating on air. You just can't see three one-foot-wide supports.
Okay. Anything new that, yes? Ann?
I think I'm the oldest thing in this room, and I've been here all my life, and I, I've just, this is just sentimental, but it was such simplicity, and I'm seeing it go away step by step, and it's a heartbreaking experience.
I have a letter that I've received that is, I'm trying to look on, i- is is Chelsea uh, Cartwright there? No, okay. Uh, so a a letter I received from her, which is basically coming something that's already been covered, uh, wondering if there's a, um, she came away with the impression that the reason for changing the location of the pier was to better withstand future storms. Is there scientific backing for this position? Um, and she raises that we witnessed the road at Driftin Beach get washed out in the winter storms. Um, even docks that are sheltered got washed out. So she wonders about the argument that the pier is safer in this new location and doesn't uh, believe that it's really substantiated. Um, so if there was no other place to put the pier, she says, I'd understand putting it in proposed locations, but there are other options. So she encourages the consideration to build the pier in a different location with the modifications that you're doing. So that was a letter that we received um, from that. And also, just so you know, uh, we, when we asked our lawyer to look at this, we also asked our conservation commission to uh, to look at this, and um, the uh, one thing that they did come back with to us was saying, uh, basically looking at both their old comprehensive plan and their current comprehensive plan. And say, just noting that the uh, the scenic vista and open space, the view lists in each of them in multiple places, Driftin Beach as one of those places to uh, to be considered. So that's, those are two pieces of correspondence that we received. Okay, any other comments and we'll get into this? Yes?
No, I was just gonna say, Terry, there was one other that I s- I had sent you today.
Yes, you, you want me to give that to?
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Okay, it's um, dear members, my family first moved to, this is from David Schwartz. Fort Clyde. First moved to Fort Clyde in nineteen thirties. We were owners of the Sardine Cannery. That was the most important business in Fort Clyde for many years, and still a prominent part of town's history for generations. My family has loved living in Fort Clyde, et cetera. Um, we write to support the application before the planning board to rebuild the dock with the property at seventy-six Seasmoke Road. Uh, we've, my wife and I have visited Seasmoke Property many times. We've seen the former dock and seen where the proposed new dock would go. Uh, we believe that the Seasmoke owners, like any other family in St. George, have the right to rebuild storm damage to the house or dock. And 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 there's nothing more in here that is different from uh, what everybody else has already said about the, we'll, we'll keep it with the plans, but it's what has been said. So just so you know, as um, Thank you. It'll all go into the file on that. So as uh, has been pointed out, um, So our job, um, as has been pointed out, is to uh, do our very best to faithfully apply our ordinances and um, to 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 pay attention to them. And as we've noted, that we found that the standards one through four in section thirteen twenty-two had been met. And so we stopped at uh, standard number five. Parenthetically, let me say, if anybody believes that we, in our decision, are wrong-headed, mistaken in our reading of this, our understanding of this, there is an appeals process that is built in, but we're going to do our best, okay? So, guys ready to go on? All right. So number five, the facility shall be consistent with the surrounding charact- character and uses of the area. Okay, but we've had a lot of time to think about this, and we've heard a lot of this. I, you want me to lead on what I'm thinking? All right. I think it is consistent. Uh, yes, there are no other piers currently visible from Driftin Beach, um, which is a recreation area in the shoreline zoning. But the previous pier was visible from a corner of the beach. And outside of the recreation area, the land's own marine residential, and piers are consistent with this zoning. Uh, additionally, there have been other recent visual changes to the landscape, namely some shoreline stabilization projects that are quite visible from the beach um, after the storms they have been put in. Um, we really didn't get a very clear, as pointed out, direction from our attorney saying, do this or do that. And as he pointed out, he uh, he hadn't seen the application, and we didn't ask him to. Because it is complicated, and we're looking for general direction. So I would think that uh, I could support that this is consistent with the character and use of the area. I would put the um, condition that the applicant has, you've included it in your um, supplemental, what what you've just uh, filed, and that was um, that as the narrative indicates, you'll be painting the galvanized uh, metal parts, a dull gray, to blend in with the surroundings and using cables for railings. So I think we should make that as a condition that you do follow through on doing that. So that's where I ended up on on it. Anybody else have?
Yeah, I don't really think it's consistent. I mean, yes, there are a lot of docks, but not in that area. And what I know from being on this um, planning board is that the, whatever gets developed, where the next times, i- it kind of begets more development. So what's to keep twenty docks from being built onto the end drifting area? And I just feel like it's our town beach and um, and the length of it, oh, we'll talk about it later. Anyway, I feel like it was um, like in some of the information we got, it said it was a hundred and eighty feet long, but truthfully, it's two hundred and seventy-four feet that we're talking about. And um, I do think it's inconsistent with the traditional. I mean, yes, fishermen have docks, all of that is true. I will also say that um, I don't think anything's wrong with the town landing and and using that for your dinghy and for your pickup and that kind of thing. So that's just.
And and I would also say that something I I'd like to talk about at the end of this meeting is um, certainly, as as you pointed out, I also had that all sorts of things to go. I think that we as a town need to grapple with exactly those issues and look at the specifics of our ordinances and where we want to go. And to get beyond simply the aspirational things in our comprehensive plan and figure out how to make it there. I don't think we can do it right now with this personally. But I think that is an important thing, given the conversation we've had that we should look at. Yes?
Um, I just, this isn't anything about like the um, the dock itself, but I, I wanted to ask the attorney um, from Pierce that would, if I understood him correctly to say that he considers the area that's mentioned in the ordinance to be the whole town.
Yes.
So that, so you think that that's quantitatively specific enough? And that that's your basis and that would it be? I I don't know if this is the right way of putting it, but would it be your position or would it be taken by people down the line? That by saying it's, it's consistent, um, and that it's, it's okay, that the, that the planning board is in essence somehow saying that um, the, the word area in the ordinance means the entire town.
Sure, so I was struggling with that word and how to give it meaning.
You said the whole town, right?
Yeah, and I, so I said, so I thought about that for a while, and I said, I, I think the most conservative way to do that is consider area to mean St. George, because it's an ordinance that applies everywhere. Obviously, only places that have water, but everywhere that you could build one of these structures, that's the safest way to do it. Otherwise, you guys are left on a case-by-case basis to try to fill that in. What is area? Is it a quarter mile this time and next time it's a half mile? The rules shouldn't change for applicants, right? Is my thinking. And so I'm looking for a way to give you something that is consistent. If town meeting disagreed with that and said, the rule now is within a half mile, then you'd have something concrete to apply.
Okay, so you, you mentioned a bunch of law cases. And one of them was um, that uh, that case Uliano, you said that was really important, but that was a case where that the governing body actually had denied an application and it went all the way up. And and they said, uh, no, actually, the, that governing body was right. And one of the things they said was um, that the area had to be geographically distinct. So I just want to make sure I understand that you're saying the distinctive geographic area that would meet the standard set by the Uliano Court would be an entire town.
I think so, yes.
That you think, that's your reading of Uliano?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't talk about an area distinct, like say, from the larger depot, more open part of the.
So, so the problem with, so I didn't mention Uliano. That actually is mentioned by Mr. Kelly in his letter. It's okay.
I thought you did.
Uliano is different, and he points this out, he explains this, because that's dealing with a rule of the Department of Environmental Protection. State agencies have a more lenient standard under these doctrines than towns do. The reasons for that, that the court has said, whether you agree with them or not, there's a state statute called the Administrative Procedures Act that provides all kinds of opportunities for public comment, uh, appeals and the like. I acknowledge there's an appeal available from this, but this is what the courts have said. And also, they have their own rules that they've adopted. They, they've adopted regulations that give life to these kinds of standards, right? So courts have said, it is different when you're talking about a municipality, a planning board that's wrestling with these concepts without an APA.
So you don't think Uliano applies in this case?
I don't think so. No. If you compare the standards that got struck down, like conserve natural beauty, integrate with the environment, right? And you look at what the, the main municipal association has guided you toward, right? This kind of vague language about, hey, we know it when we see it, is not fair. It's not fair to you and it's not fair to applicants. Okay, good. Um, any, any other discussion that we need on, on this?
Well, just on my last point, I think I, I would add that um, even if um, this may prove your point, but e- even if um, we were to treat the area as being something smaller than the whole town and the kind of the general vicinity of the uh, of Driftin Beach instead, I still think, I still think this use is consistent.
Sure.
But.
Okay, and therein lies the difficulty, right?
So.
Yeah, I, I understand that, there, but there is an arbitrary.
So, so I get your point.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any more discussion? Are we ready to?
Ma'am, can I just say one thing?
Is this?
I'm the only one in the room here, other than maybe you, that will see this dock twenty-four seven.
You know what? I, I think we've heard.
Yeah, and so I'm in favor.
Okay, uh, that's fine.
We'll see it in passing. I'll see it all the time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion on this then?
We find the standard in section thirteen twenty-two A five is met because docks are a part of now, well, they're just a part of the shore land life in this town. And um, I, and we don't have any uh, specific rule that says that docks can't be in certain places, or we do have some rules that regulate where you can put a dock. This isn't one of them. So I guess that's my motion.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion on that?
We just have to leave, add in that galvanized will be painted.
Oh, yes, and um,
To minimize the visual look.
And that we would make a condition to that, that uh, the uh, uh, galvanized metal parts are painted a dull gray.
I'll, I'll accept that.
Right, thank you for remembering that. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Do, did anybody make a motion?
Oh, yes, you made a motion.
Aye.
All opposed? Two no. So that's three yes and two no. Okay. Number six, the facility shall be no larger in dimension than necessary to carry on the activity. Part of me wants to say, I can say it seems longer than you need it, uh, because you can just say that uh, uh, wow, well, it's a really low tide, I guess I can't go out right now, or I'll go to the town landing. So I can say that. Um, but that's my opinion. Our ordinance, I think, doesn't give us any leeway to say that. Uh, and the state uh, findings are that this is no longer than necessary to achieve the objective that the applicant has put forward. Um, and yes, you, you've explained how you tried to minimize that as much as possible. Um, so even though I don't think you need a dock that long, it doesn't matter what I think. I think that um, given the state's findings, it's no longer than necessary. Uh, and the fact that we don't have any other standard than that to rely on. than that to rely on, I think we have to support it.
And what are we doing here?
Well, that's what I, I think that, and I think I've got some proposals of some, a task force that can really look at some of these issues and maybe put some teeth into them.
And I think what we're doing is what Ann said at the beginning of the discussion, and that is that we're applying the ordinance.
But they're, but they're limited, and it's, there's a lot of gray area, which our lawyer friend has brought up.
Well, and that's what I would like for us in the future. I don't think we can do anything right now, because this is the ordinance that we have. But I think we can via town meeting. We can have some, and I've got some ideas of some things that, that we can look at, but I think we can, but right now, we have to apply the ordinance. That's what I think.
I agree.
Anyway, more discussion on the, is, is there a way of looking at this differently?
Well, I move we find the standard in section thirteen twenty-two A six has been met on the basis of Ann's discussion.
I'll second. Got it written down. You'll second that?
I will.
All right, more discussion? Read it both? All right, all in favor? Aye. Four? All against, one? Okay, that's good. All right, then we have standards seven, eight, and nine, which I believe are not applicable because it's entitled water and there are no structures proposed to be built upon this.
I'll make that motion that they're not, seven, eight, and nine are not applicable.
Agreed.
All right? All in favor? Aye. And number ten is construction equipment must access, access the shoreline by barge when feasible. And I believe that they have said that will access via barge. So that standard's been met.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, based on those findings, can I have a motion to approve this application?
I'll make that motion to approve the application with those standards.
Agreed.
All in favor? That'd be three, and opposed, two. Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Dean.
Gee, thanks, Jerry. I'll circulate this to everybody.
Your plan?
So I'll, we're, we're gonna continue to talk over here, so it's, I don't think it's raining outside yet, so let's go there.
If you can take your discussions outside, please.
Please, take your discussions out.
Two of you who are talking there. The three of you who are talking, please.
So, what I, what I'd like to do is, because I know it's been pointed out in all these cases that you mentioned, I mean, this is an issue everybody's dealt with. And we didn't make it up. We, we have, you know, we're basically following the, the state shoreline zoning ordinance. So the language is vague there as well. But I think, you know, there are things like, what do we mean about providing visual as well as actionable cover? How do we convert the aspirational issues of protecting views? And then I, I've been asking myself, what would be inconsistent with the use and character of the area? And I came up with two things.
They have a real key here, defining what is the area.
Exactly, exactly. What is the area? What is the area, and then what would be inconsistent?
Right.
I mean, I, I'm just concerned about having it on the record that this applicant was approved by saying the area is a full town. Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Well, you couldn't find that.
We didn't find that, we just found that it was, you know, they were arguing that, right? I don't think we're locked into saying that.
Because, because I think a lot of the discussion, but that the town, and it, I think you mentioned I'll send it, it's a geographic area, well, town's not a geographical area.
Right, that's right.
You know?
And I think.
One, one is just defined by municipality.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned about other aspects of people who go to get permits and people who want to do projects that you, you call the, the area. It's called the area, the whole town. I, I, I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, I just think it could be a potential problem in the future if.
Yeah, and I think we have to, but I think we could, if we've, we've said it here, right, but we, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't law, right? But we can say the, the town.
Well, it's precedent.
It's precedent.
It's precedent.
It's, it's, come on, it's got a Supreme Court that doesn't care about it, so.
Well, no.
It was a plan. Oh, sorry, sorry. But I was trying to think of what, let's figure out what.
But, but just on that point, we, we did not find that, we did not agree what the area means, and it, and we couldn't and shouldn't. And it doesn't really matter, because that section is unconstitutional. And so whatever we say about it, you know, we're done.
What do you mean?
It's void for vagueness and.
Scenic area is not, conserving natural beauty is, though, there's, was a big difference in those two cases. There was a very big difference, so the, the Uliano case does say that a town has the right to rulings based on an area in the town. As, it was my reading of it, I, I, I'm, I'm no land use expert, they're saying, I read the two cases.
That's correct.
Yes.
I mean, so is it, in this case, is it a visual area? Let's, let's see.
A visual field.
Right, it's a visual field, yeah.
Right.
I mean, but for example, a lot of my summer, I spent a day at Birch Point, and I hadn't been out there in years. You know, moving my family up, and we decided to go to the beach. And of course, I had this, this discussion in mind, and I looked around from the beach there, and a much wider scope of view from Birch Point. Not a single visible pier.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm not saying whether it's good or bad to see a pier, but I mean, I, I mean, after a while, you don't see things anyway.
You look right at them.
But, but I'm just concerned I had said that places are different ones. What this, what this what this lawyer was saying is, the visual area is the entire town.
Right, and I don't think he's right, I don't know. And I think we can define it differently.
Right, well, okay, but we, it was, we did vote on it as being consistent with the area. And we can define the area, he did, and that's his application. So we voted on the application that was before us, and we voted in favor of that being the area. That's just what I would argue, if I, if I, if I were a person that wanted to do something, I would argue it's okay, because, you know, just like you said, that that pier, you know, the visual area for that application was the whole town, why shouldn't everybody's application for a permit be the whole town?
Yes. Yeah. Well, and I think that there can be some I think that there, we can have, figure out some ways, and I, to have some limits, for instance, I was thinking, when I was writing down Marshall Point, thinking, man, it would be so sad to have piers, and be ridiculous. I mean, it's a ridiculous place. But it, to have piers there, because there is such an unobstructed view out to the ledges and the islands. So I think that we can actually def- I, 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 I don't understand the legalities, but I think we can probably begin to define.
I'm not saying I do either.
What, what specific things are. And then I've also, I started thinking, what would be an inconsistent use? And I think of something like a commercial pier in a residential area.
Or at one time, I, I even, and this is separate from piers, but I was talking to Jim Parker, who said they were thinking of putting a dollar store at Wiley's Corner.
Right.
I see, I think that's not, that's inconsistent.
Oh, that, that totally is, and I think we can
You know.
Figure, I think we've figured out some ways.
We could put a pier in there. Put a pier in there, because it's all the same.
Well, I also thought about the whole thing with the Watts Cove Pier.
Yes.
Remember that? And, you know, that a pier in a contained cove. I mean, that is a shallow, and we've got a number of shallow contained cove.
Well.
And I think that is potentially another sort of.
And how many piers?
Wait a minute, you mean, I can't put a, can't put a pier out?
Well.
But pier like.
And how many piers in a shallow cove? Because, because sometimes they're already there.
Right, right, somewhere, I mean, you can put a moratorium, I would say, no, no more, but anyway, I I, I thought, but those were just some of the things. Probably had, oh, I have this type of thing, yes. And then how do we determine if the length is longer than necessary? You know, the DEP has, well, I need this much length, and, oh, yep, you've met that standard. Oh, no. And what would limit the length of the pier? Would it be, well, navigational issues, right, which would fall to the Harbor Master or Army Corps? But are there others? And, you know, I, what's the impact of proliferation of piers on the fisheries? Yeah, one pier doesn't matter much. Maybe two don't. But a whole slew of piers might begin to impact the fisheries, anyway.
And to look at like what Chelsea, what Cartwright said, and, and, and also what Richard was saying, that there really wasn't any scientific, they said, oh, we came down a few times and it was windy.
Right.
But that road got washed away.
Yeah. And I, I wrestled with that, I mean, it's sort of, what I was thinking is, well, first of all, there is nothing in our ordinance that says you can't build something in a stupid place in a stupid way.
Right.
That is true.
So we.
True, like that, like the house on, on Marshall.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
There's nothing that says you can't do it, so we can't say
That's true.
this is, there's no scientific evidence that this is a better spot. Because that.
Doesn't count.
We, we, we don't have that in our ordinance, and, and God knows, I don't think we really want to get into that. But anyway, I think we should, there's enough energy about this, well, the rah rahs are, you know, they're, they're all gonna be happy, so they're not gonna have any energy anymore, but they're don't, don't, don't quote me verbatim. But I think we should come to, come, come up with a task force of some people that really dealt into these issues and make it happen. So anyway, that's what I think.
That would be like somebody from the Conservation Commission. Somebody, the Harbor Master.
The Harbor Master.
The Maine Municipal, whatever it is.
Also, if we're gonna pay a lawyer like Richard Kelly, who I know, and he's a very nice person, good lawyer, but I mean, I think if, if we're gonna hire a lawyer, we should make him, we should make him take a position.
Yes.
It would be nice to.
Right, one way or the other.
No dancing around.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And, and I also think that part of, you know, if we, if we assemble a group
Richard, we're here.
Of about, you know, it's Bill, it's Bill, actually.
Bill. Bill Kelly.
Bill Richard.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Mister.
You know, a group of four or five people representing the different constituencies, and then get maybe somebody from the Maine Municipal Association to meet with us, and somebody who would have some expertise to really help, because we're not the only ones. I mean, right, this is everybody's dealt with it, you know, Camden had their moratorium for a while. They came up with inner and outer harbor. We could come up with Martinsville, Port Clyde, Tennant's Harbor, the river, I mean, we could come up with zones, I guess.
But don't call them that.
Oh, don't call them that.
Zone areas.
We could come up with areas like that.
I, Conservation Commission had come up with areas of outstanding natural beauty or something or not.
And that's made, made its way into the comprehensive plan, both the old one and the new one.
Yeah.
But again, it's how do we convert that into something that is measurable and tangible?
Because my view is different than someone else's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sometimes we need science and sometimes we don't, is what, and, and, but I think that's with everything, that's why it's so, I mean, it's not that clear-cut, no.
Right, right.
Even.
Oh, I think I ran across a quote fairly recently that says, "Just because something's legal doesn't mean it's moral."
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the other argument, boy, I'm spouting off. All right, so how are we going to make something like this concrete happen?
You want to talk to Brendan?
Talk to Brendan, good idea. I'll talk to Brendan. Yes. Good.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor? We're unanimous on that one. Thank you, all, this was hard.
Yeah.
And.
I was not looking forward to tonight. So, I just make sure that you got what I said.
Well, I have, if I, I you pour, don't do your.
Take care.